This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Call this meeting to order. This is the Monroe Planning Commission's regular meeting for Monday, February 26, 2024. It's 7:00 PM. And Anna, you would call Wolf, please.
Okey dokey. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Paul Dawkins, Lockhart Nugent, and Petrino.
Thanks, Anna. Next item is public comments. This is a time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except those issues subject to our public here. Uninvited to speak, please approach the podium or the seat over there and state your name and association with the city or area of residence. The timer will be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Who cares?
Hello, I'm Susan Davis with Winnebago, now in Woodinville instead of Monroe. The office here in Monroe is close down. But I am still available to anybody that would like to get onto out over the ground to look at the potential changes that are opposed to the city of Monroe and UGA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Always good to have public comments. We'll move on to meeting minutes from prior meetings from the 12th of February. Any edits or comments? Anyone care to move approval?
I will. I'm going to approve the minutes from the February 12th planning commission meeting.
Thanks, Brandy.
Okay.
Thanks, Kelsey. Kelsey's second. Commissioners all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, six of us. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have our Monroe 2024 project. Kate, are you presenting? Do we have consultants on it?
Nope, nope. You're stuck with me this evening.
Okay, I just saw one consultant sent an email that maybe...
Yeah, Alex offered, but because he'll be here on Thursday for the or online for the CAC meeting, he said, "Your excuse for the evening." Got this.
Fantastic.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. So this evening, you are being introduced to three chapters. These are the first drafts. The staff has gone through and done some editing, changes, redirects. And then late last week, I have a whole other body of edits that have not been incorporated yet. So I'm going to walk you through chapters one, two, and then I'm going to hand it over to Ben, who will walk you through the parks, the parks chapter. And so I'm just going to get started. The introduction is chapter one, and it talks about what is a comprehensive plan? Why are we doing it? Then it talks about the context, which you've heard me, it's getting probably pretty repetitive now. Growth Management Act, the multi-county planning policies, which is the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050. The next layer is the Snohomish County-wide planning policies. And then you get down to the city of Monroe. And so it's laying this out. One thing I do want to put out there, which is in the memo, but this is only a Word document right now. Chapters one and two do not include any of the graphics yet. So in a later iteration, it will be pretty and it will have tables in it. But right now, we just really want you to, are you connecting with the words? Are we saying the story appropriately? And so it's just a Word document right now. So then continuing on with the introduction, we talk about the community engagement. Then it gets into the plan organization, which you were actually introduced to a couple of meetings ago when we're talking about the framework. The introduction then leads into the vision and guiding principles, which I'll work on next, which is chapter two. Then chapters three through 10, actually, not nine, got to make that correction, are the actual land use, housing, economic development, parks, recreation, natural environment, shoreline. All of those chapters go into more detail. And a lot of the data will actually be in the appendices. So we're really focusing on summarizing each topic, and it will include the goals and policies. So moving on. And then again, at the end, it starts laying out what are in the policy or the appendices. So that's a very fast overview of chapter one. And so you have homework. If you haven't looked at these yet, it's a very easy read. I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that you all will have an opportunity to review this in the next couple of weeks. Send me edits, and I'm just going to continue building them into the document, including the ones I received late last week. Any questions or any, oh my gosh, I can't believe you said this, or does it feel right?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah.
It's about one and two. So seven is different because it's like, it's like policy, action, policy, action. So one and two will never have a policy and action. They're just like they are. They're just for description and like context.
Absolutely, yeah. So chapters three through 10, when you get into a specific subject that's required by one of the requirements of the Growth Management Act, that will include high-level summary, data, and then it will include the goals and policies. So seven is a really good example of what you're going to see for the rest of them. The reason seven is so well formulated is because it's from the PROS Plan. All this work was just done, and so they're, we're updating the chapter to reflect that plan adoption.
When I was reading it, there's a lot of like, this is how it is right now. I know that those are the goals, and that might be worded that way because this is what we're striving to, right? But sometimes when I was reading it, I was like, well, it's not like that yet, obviously. But I think it's because then I reframed it and like, okay, these are future goals, not necessarily like, where do I have an example of that?
I agree. I know where I'm at now.
Okay. Just where I was like, so one of them, let me just find it. Just like, oh, we have walkways and we have pathways that are connected. Well, we don't have some of that yet, but is that okay that it's already, that it's stated that way because we're striving to get there?
It is.
Right, okay. So these are like, this is how, we want all of our next goals to fit that statement.
Correct.
Doesn't necessarily need to be true right now.
Right, because when you get, when you get into the actual element itself, transportation, that's, that's a really good one. It will include here are all the existing conditions, and then it will go through, how does a transportation network fit into what we're trying to accomplish on the land use side? And then it will have a very long laundry list of, to achieve this, we need all of these things accomplished. And that's true. Again, the chapter seven is a really good example. It tells you the story of what we actually have today, the goals that we're trying to achieve, and then it starts laying out how we accomplish it.
Cool, okay.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, in the beginning of the document, I just had to reframe how I was reading that. So I think I got it after a couple of minutes, like, okay, this is where we're going.
Do you, I'm just wondering if there's like a way we may be able to do like an introduction or provide the reader more guidance?
Um, yeah, like, I maybe just, I'll have to think on that, but um, I think after I read the guiding principles, that these are like, yeah.
Okay. And you said you had the same kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I like the message. It seems a little like it could get a little more succinct.
Okay.
I feel like I kept reading the same like keywords like over and over again throughout the paragraphs. And it was like, let's just, let's just sum this up because you want people to read it, right? So that's, that's what I kept feeling like. It was just a little wordy. And um, I do have one thing on page 13 that it's like, chapter two, it's like history and then today. And it says, this is just the part that I don't know about this. It says, "At the core of its value, Monroe's identity lies in its commitment to inclusive community and equity, embracing diversity and strength." That, that feels like we placed it in there like on purpose, and it's not. It seems like it's out of place because we're talking about history and then today, like what the town remembers. And then, I don't know, I feel like that, it talks about that in guided principles as our number one guided principles. And um, I think it seems like it's out of place right there.
Okay. Good feedback.
And I thought the history part was really interesting. Like, I didn't know some of that about Monroe. Would be cool to have more of that timeline because we have, I don't know. I didn't realize how much of the indigenous culture was here because we don't have much of it in the town at all. And on the history part, there is a sentencing that says making life better and easier for the community, which I, it's like, what community are you talking about? Because that, that, those resources changed a whole culture that probably didn't make it better for them. So I think staying away from any statements that are generalizing that these were good things is, we probably should stay away from that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Kelsey and I were talking a little bit before the meeting started, and this whole section has been rewritten extensively. And I was really trying to get at not, just be factual. Don't make statements that somebody's better or not because, just stick with the facts.
Yeah.
So it's being rewritten. Any questions online or comments? Okay, so I'll walk you through chapter two. And chapter two, you've kind of seen pieces of it already. As Brandy and Kelsey have already kind of brought to your attention, it does talk about the history of Monroe, where we've been, where we're going. And then the heart of this chapter is Imagine Monroe. And then starting to break it down into the guiding principles, which you have seen once now. And they're going back to the CAC on Thursday, so they might be modified a little bit more. But again, these are, and they are in no particular order. They can move around. But the, the first one right now is the equity-centered. The next one is connected and active. The third one is safe and accessible. Four is local and community-driven. And the final one is affordable and diverse housing. And it's really trying to take the sentences in Imagine Monroe and create the principles that will be used to create the goal and policy statements in each chapter. So we continue to tie back to Imagine Monroe. And then the next section just gives you the description. Did you have some? Oh, no, okay. The next section just gives you an overview of goals, policies, and actions. And that is it for chapter two. It'd be very short. And again, this will have a lot of nice graphics. I'm hoping to have, well, maybe we might be able to work on a timeline as well. I thought that was a pretty good suggestion. A visual on that. So besides the comments we've already discussed, anything online? No? Okay.
The other thing I was looking at, Kate, is will there be hyperlinks in the final product? When Ben was with Community Development, he talked about some of the documents when they're online.
Okay.
If you have a chart or something that's referencing the PROS Plan, rather than embed pages and pages of Parks Department things. If there's hyperlink, it just bounces you to that particular document. And just to make your document smaller and easier to read, how does that sound?
That, that is the goal because one of the, one of the goals with this comprehensive plan update is make it much more, whatever feed you're using, your phone, your tablet, your computer, so it's very easy to click. So I will make sure that hyperlinks are included.
I have a question. The equity definition, is this the final definition or is that still in blocks?
It is not. The edits that I received from senior leadership is more similar to what we heard kind of at the tail end of the last CAC meeting, that it will probably be shortened. The guidance that I was given on Friday was removing the list of descriptors and leaving, so it'd be ending at, so it'd be similar to the definition. So it'd be equity is central in achieving this vision as it addresses opportunity, power, influence, and resources to meet the needs of all people, period.
Because I would be in favor of that because I feel like we're highlighting it as our number one guiding principle. And you lose, you lose the effectiveness of it in that sentence because it's listing out so many things. So by the time you get to the real important part, equity is the principle which institutions practically adopt, like you're, it's not as clear. And so I, I would like, if that's what they were suggesting, that would, I think, help that seem a lot more impactful.
Okay. How does the rest of the commission feel? I know we talked about this a lot. People okay?
When I was reading that, I felt like those paragraphs should be switched. The equity, like the definition fit into it, but I don't know.
Okay, I'll look into that a little bit more.
Are these page number, I mean, like, what are the? The two to two on the bottom of that?
It's chapter two, page one, chapter two, page two, chapters two, page three. That's close.
Oh.
All right. So again, your homework assignment is if you could take a look at these two chapters and send me edits and, or just, I read it. I don't have any comments right now that, just so I know that you've had an opportunity to review it. I would appreciate that within the next two weeks. Ben, you want to take it over?
Sure. So I'm Vince Watson with the Parks Department and here to talk about chapter seven, which is the park recreation and open space element of the proposed COM plan. And so just to give everyone a little bit of history on where this comes from and why this was done so early. So in 2022, the city adopted their Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And that is under a requirement from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. And so where planning is, uses Puget Sound Regional Council as their guidance, Parks uses RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office, as our guidance. And so we're kind of in, in two separate paths, and then we meet under the COM plan. And so with RCO, in order for us to qualify for funding, which is the majority of our parks, capital projects are based off those turf fields out there, about a million dollars came from, over a million came from grants. And that all is typically funneled through RCO. And just like with Puget Sound Regional Council, and you have transportation dollars that are funded from the federal government down through PSRC and to the cities. This is the same with RCO, federal recreation dollars are funneled through RCO and state money, and then down to the cities. And so we're on a six-year cycle, so we're off from the COM plan. And, and so even though we just adopted it in 2022, as soon as the COM plan's adopted, probably in 2026, we'll start gearing up for our, putting out our request for proposal and then gearing back into our, you know, our six-year update again. And so we'd kind of fall in this, this off period. This was discussed when we originally started scoping the COM plan a few years back. And it was decided that due to the planned adoption date of, of the PROS Plan, and because it's on a different cycle, we would essentially use the existing PROS Plan to develop the goals and policies that you see before you in this chapter. And so council had already gone through those and approved, approved that plan. And one of the kind of the driving factors on it is I believe that the PROS Plan was, the 2022 one, was the first document we did with an intentional DEI lens on it. And so we put a lot of effort into that. The mayor was very involved in it. And this is actually what kind of helped us craft our request for proposal when we went out for our consultant bids for our comprehensive plan. And so with that, that's why you're seeing this kind of early and you're seeing a more complete chapter. If you go and you look in the PROS Plan, there are a few kind of carryover things that we were going to address when the COM plan came up, specifically kind of some siteing and location things. So we already know those. We're going to, we're going to tackle those during this kind of update period. But any additional kind of comments or structure? I know like Kate said, there are graphics in here too, but we'll probably use the graphics basically from the PROS Plan to do this. And so with that, we're also in the process of doing a park or a trails master plan. And so what that does is it's a very specific intentional plan. You'll see it's, it's in the PROS Plan where we do talk about trails. But this one is, this is all the consultant is focused on is, is bike and ped travel around the city and how we get around there, looking at our existing networks and then proposed networks that go along with it. That one's running a little bit of a different course because it really, really ties in with our transportation element. Because they require essentially what's called complete streets now, where when you have a road, it's no longer just for cars. They want to look at for bicycles, what's comfortable for pedestrians to walk at along. And sometimes that doesn't look like your normal five-foot planter strip in between. Maybe a larger planter strip. And so they're working kind of in concert with Transco, who's doing our transportation element. So you'll probably see me here twice, once for this and then when the transportation element comes up. Because they very much kind of married up with each other, even to the point where our consultants are working with each other and produce, it actually resulted in a cost savings for us because each of them have some of the data that they already needed. So they're just kind of crossing it over right now. And, and so they're pulling that together. We actually plan on having our second open house for the trails plan coming up here at the end of the month. And that, the purpose of that open house is, okay, we heard you at your first open house. This is what we think we heard from you. And so at the second open house, everyone will get an opportunity to come and give feedback on, you know, where the trails go, where, where we kind of want to focus some of our efforts and kind of achieving this, this multimodal transportation that, that we, that we should be doing. And so with that, was that, I gave you a lot of information in a very kind of short timeframe. And it is a little different than kind of the PSRC, similar to the, to the COM plan. The PROS Plan looks out 20 years. So we're looking at essentially 20 years of growth, you know, on these six-year updates. And so you'll see we'll have, you know, parks planned in our urban growth area that haven't even been annexed yet, that we need these areas and it's important. And the trail plan will also identify trails in our urban growth area. Those are important because when people come into annex, we need that documentation showing that we intend, we've intended to put a park here. So when they come in, we actually have leverage to get a park for them. It usually results in us paying impact fees towards them. So when you buy a single-family home, you pay impact fees for an impact on an existing system. And so instead of them giving us cash, we essentially take land in lieu of, usually it's a little more than that. But, so you'll see that, that planning even goes outside of our boundaries right now.
The Trails Master Plan presentation in the March?
The, the second open house, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it's the last Wednesday in March, but will be posted on Facebook and, yeah, on the web. And so it'll be similar to the, to the first open house. We'll have more of a kind of presentation time in the beginning, say, you know, as they go through the map. Some of it gets pretty detailed, because the entire city is a lot of very narrow kind of strips. And then what we thought would be kind of a cool idea is we're going to have three breakout tables, and we're going to kind of split the city off into three sections. And so they'll have two maps at the table, the big overall system plan. And then those people that are kind of like, well, I want to, you know, focus on my area of city because this is where I walk 95% of the time. And so they can kind of go to those breakout tables and get a more detailed view of, of their section. So, yeah, that goes.
Good.
Any questions online? No? Okay. Same thing on this one. If you could review it and send me edits or no edits at this time in the next two weeks, that'd be appreciated. So we are officially off and running. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was saying the big one that I had in this section was about like when we were billed in fees. I know in my hometown, they got a consultant and they decided to start charging for like the baseball fields and stuff. And it really affected the program. And then they had to like, three years later, go back because kids couldn't afford to do baseball anymore because of the types of fees that they had implemented on that. So I know that was probably being taken into account, but there was a couple of actions in here on like developing fee systems and just making sure that we are consciously thinking about that, like not a blanket statement of a fee of like, oh, yeah, yeah, every time the baseball field is being used. I don't know what the structure is right now in Monroe, but like that town, like a lot of kids just couldn't do baseball anymore because of, it was too expensive. So these fields were not even being used at all.
Right.
So I don't know. That was just a comment on one of the action items on when we developed fees to be thinking about. And that goes back to our equity as well.
Yeah, yeah. And it is a good point. And, and fees are a very tricky thing because if you get them too low, then everybody from around wants to come in and use your fields and they get jammed up with more than just kind of the, the rest of Monroe. You get them too high, that's exactly what we talk about. Now you essentially force people to go somewhere else that can't afford those fields.
And where would they go if not Monroe? Because there's no cheaper place probably, or I don't know if Gold Barn stuff has infrastructure like that. But yeah, so I just, that was something that immediately came to mind because it really, like, these kids only have that.
Right.
Some of them, just like that's where they go after school. And it was a huge, huge bummer for a couple of years on that program, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. I cannot remember our next topic.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Kate.
Oh, no, no.
Melanie has a question.
I just wanted to add on, thank you, Kelsey, or Commissioner Dawkins for mentioning that. I know the, that the Monroe School District recently had to kind of backtrack on some fee increases for just that reason with, I know they worked with like the Sky Valley Little League and I think some other local sports programs because the fees had gone up so high that it just wasn't affordable anymore. So I appreciate that that is mentioned, and it's definitely something for us to consider moving forward. I know we have kind of a, not necessarily unique, but we've got, especially like Freylands comes to mind. It's kind of a partnership with the city and the school district out there. But I think it's, it's mostly under the fee structure of the city, correct? The Freylands fields or is it dependent on?
The synthetic turf?
Yeah.
Field, correct. It's, that's all city. And then there's a, essentially an agreement for the school district to use it during recess. And so we closed down a sec, part of it's closed down during the day to allow recess to take place. And then once that's done, then it, it gets essentially rented out to teams.
Gotcha. I just know that, and this is just my kids and there's, my kids are still young, but they primarily utilize, once they get up to like the farm level of baseball alone, they primarily use Park Place and Lake Tye turf fields and stuff. So obviously some of that's district, some of it's city, but just, yeah. I won't ramble anymore. Something to keep in mind, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, it's funny, we were looking at the, we go through two big cycles a year where we, where people can reserve fields. And it's, you know, where the Little League and everyone comes in. And, and one of the things we're running into is not only due to the number of growth or the growth in teams, but 10 years ago, we didn't have cricket, you know? And, and so now we have, and then even before that, lacrosse wasn't a real big thing, and then that came in. So now we have even new sports. And so we're really feeling the pressure on our fields and trying to get, you know, kind of this equitable distribution among everyone. You know, obviously we have priorities for local, you know, if you 50% or more of your team, you know, resides within city limits, you get kind of a priority there. But, but it's, it always ends with everyone not getting everything they wanted just because we're, we're, we have the fields.
How much time do we have for just open fields right now? Or just not like purposely scheduling, not allowing anyone to take time from, you know, 7:00 to 9:00 PM or something so that families and people that aren't in organized sports can just come and enjoy it in their own city?
So, right, I don't know yet. So we've gone, we've gone through the first phase, and then we say, this is what we can give you. And then we wait for the teams to come back and say, well, these, these, these don't work for us. You can have those back. And then we throw those back out again and say, you know, hey, does anybody want these times? And if no, then those are just kind of reserved open. But to your question, I think specifically your question is, we don't have kind of, nobody's going to schedule on this day. It's just going to be kind of an open, specifically the synthetic fields. It's just an open play area because those are in just high, high demand all the time.
Because they're synthetic and it's ignited, so. But an organization could form. So we could form like an organization, right? Where you just said, you know, all of us middle school moms are going to get together and try and get the field for our kids and whatever sport they want to play, they can play on it and they can reserve it for an hour?
Yeah, and, and then, yeah, and that's the other thing is you can always call in and reserve it too, just like picking shelters. If you have a, a time that you want to come in and reserve it, it's just, yeah, it's just calling or, and shelter locations specifically, just because they're easier or online. Where the fields, there are criteria towards trying to get into Monroe residents first and then opening up to others later.
Just like you have your ear, yeah. I would just say that, that's a voice of people who probably aren't going to organize together to say, we would just like to... Just like you have your ear. Yeah. I would just say that, that's a voice of people who probably aren't going to organize together to say, we would just like to see some open playtime at the park.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an equitable thing too, because I mean, those kids don't want to just want to go play on turf field. So, you know.
Yeah.
It might be something about that we put that in on purpose, like.
Yeah, block out some times.
Set up times that are just open so that people could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like in here, we're talking about residents enjoying Monroe, right? And that's something, when that first came, everybody thought that, that everyone was going to be able to enjoy that a lot more than they get to. Because they don't want to get online and reserve for some spontaneous thing they want to go do on a Tuesday night or something. So, um. Yeah.
Good point. But I know they're busy because I see the lights on after ten.
Right.
So they were booked solid and, you know, if we got cricket fields coming on, then that might take some of the pressure. I've, I've only seen the cricket books down around Sundays, but it might take it other days.
Yeah, yeah, it's difficult. I mean, you have, you know, um, just depending on what sport it is and how much of the field they utilize, you know, baseball, cricket. It's, you know, the entire thing. Sometimes you can fit two teams on at a time.
That's the other thing about baseball, it's here in Monroe now. There's, there's kids out there in the middle of everywhere practicing baseball and they just to start up the nursery.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's unfortunate because we have limited opportunity because down in Sky River, that's all floodplain. And so you can't put turf down there. It's just going to pack up with silt each time it floods. And so we have that. And then obviously Miracle League field, Miracle League field does get rented out with a priority for the, um, uh, Rotary field. With a priority for the Miracle League organization, which is an organization for children, adults, especially needs to play baseball. And so they have kind of their pre-book times and then it gets essentially leased out to, uh, any other organizations that want to use it.
Um, another thing on, uh, on page 11 of this, of the chapter seven, um, I did see like actionable items for trailheads and stuff. But I didn't, I don't know if crosswalks are part of you guys or transportation.
Transportation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause, um, like just getting to Al Borlin is really hard, um, because there's no crosswalks and then there's the highway. And, um, but yeah, so that's something for transportation, but, um.
I say that with a little bit of an asterisk because they're slowly starting to blend together.
Yeah, like the crosswalks wouldn't be to get to these parks.
Yeah.
Cause like right now you do have to go all the way to Lewis and Maine. There's no crosswalks at all to get there and, um, and it's a curve off of a highway and it's, it's extremely dangerous.
Yeah.
Um, taken, I live really close to that and I've taken, uh, friends with kids and it's like, they almost don't want to go.
Right.
Because it's scary to get across the road.
Yeah.
And we're like waiting in the middle median for like people going 40, 50 miles an hour.
Right.
It's scary.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think you like, you're going to start seeing them blend because as part of the trails plan, they're also looking at kind of routes through Monroe. Because we're planning for, you know, the trail coming down from St. Thomas and trail coming down from Newball.
Yeah, that's exciting to read. It was cool, like just seeing the vision of how it's all coming together. It was like, huh, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah. So to your point, I, I think as we start establishing these routes or planning for these routes and it's like, okay, here's an opportunity. You're already working on the road. All right, let's put a, a crossing in right here for future. And so, yeah, you're going to see them blend together more and more.
So there's a transportation section that we'll see in the next chapter.
Any more questions? Okay. Um, I can't remember. Did I hand out the schedule of when elements are coming to you? I did. Okay. Well, I think we are still on track for that. So.
Yeah, good.
Is it, that's what I was trying to say. I feel like economic development might be coming next, but, um, I'll see you in a couple. Something. Yeah. So that's it for comp plan updates.
Okay. Appreciate you being here, Ben.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Next up, I have the 5.2. This is kind of your own. This is the January 2024 pre-development report.
Yes, it is. So our first monthly report for 2024. Uh, we started the year with three pre-application meetings. One was for a three lot short plat proposal on 144th Place with Bob Bacon. Another was for a grocery store of dry goods at 119 East Main Street with Jose Perez. And then we had a second pre-application meeting for the proposed car museum with Mike Price at 126 East Main Street. That's at, um, Maine and Ferry there across from the 7-Eleven. Uh, our project highlight for this month was IHOP. IHOP is now open, as I'm sure everyone has heard. Their initial tenant improvement application was submitted in June of 2023 with subsequent applications for commercial plumbing, mechanical, hood suppression and sign permits. They passed inspections and were granted approval to open in January. Our building permit numbers, uh, our single family was up from two issued in December. And commercial TI is about the same along with building inspections. It's about the same as it was in December. Onto current projects. You'll see that there's two updates on this page. The Garibaldi Final Plat is listed under the Final Plat Review. That's a 90 lot subdivision, uh, planned residential development in the R4 zoning district off Chain Lake Road. Um, and Garibaldi has actually, I actually just sent out the approval letter today. So they've been granted final plat approval. Um, you will also notice under variance, the Duval Rio Vista 18600 US two. Um, they are requesting a variance for the setback production for the installation of a dumpster enclosure. This is the property that's next door to the IHOP where you see they're doing some construction right now.
So the variance is on the east side? It's not on the railroad side?
It's on the railroad side.
It's on the railroad side? Okay.
Yeah, it's, um, they wanted to push a little bit further back. It was allowed. It's kind of an unusual variance request, but they're trying to reuse an existing lot to the best of its abilities. And so we'll see where it goes. Yeah.
No issues with the railroad goes.
It will not be on their property.
Yeah.
Like I said, um, single family is up a little bit, which is not too surprising considering we are coming up on the code updates. So people are probably trying to get their building permit applications in. You will see under the building updates, the 2021 building codes are still set to be adopted on March 15th. With the exception of the woo-ee code, that code is still being discussed with the state building code council and in legislation regarding what is to be adopted, if anything, at the state level. Have we, have we explained what the woo-ee code is to this group? This is, this is the wildfire urban interface. And I know there have been a couple of articles, um, in the papers recently. And what this, um, law that actually already went into place requires a area around houses clear of flammable vegetation. It impacts the construction materials of the house, the deck. Um, the city of Bellingham, uh, has been in the paper a lot recently because they're like, why would you do that? When we need trees to do all these other things, clean stormwater, uh, reduce heat on, uh, heat islands. And so that's been part of this friction. Um, some, some amendments are being requested, I believe it's, I'm trying to remember what, um, Director Bailey gave an update recently on where it was at the legislature. But then separate to that is the, the state building council conversation. So we're really not sure what's going to happen with that in particular. But the intent is really trying to, uh, prevent what happened, for example, in Medical Lake last year where wildfires took out a huge chunk of the community. So, um, it has good intent. How you implement is the question right now. And I will be attending, um, a class for the woo-ee code specifically, um, at the, um, Washington Association of Building Official Conference. So that will be next month.
Kate, Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, the, the variance, is that variance, uh, setback from the railroad east bit? Is that what they're talking about?
Yes, it is. It's, it's their south property line that is adjacent to the railroad, um, property.
Okay. More like Jay asked, I want to fringe it on the, on the front part. Okay.
Yeah.
Also question about that auto museum, is that a car museum? Is that going to be open to the public?
So we're not, so for pre-applications, I, I feel like we need to do like a little statement. So when things come from a pre-application, that doesn't necessarily mean it becomes an actual project. Um, this is the second time this particular applicant has been, uh, before the city asking for additional questions. I believe the intent was to have public, um, the public to come and visit the, um, the vehicles. There are a lot of requirements from a fire safety perspective, which I think is the current concern for the, the applicant. So if it, if it does move forward, we could include that as a tenant improvement because it'd be fairly significant for that building. So if it actually becomes a project, it might make it somewhere else on the, the community development list.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
And by the way, IHOP is great.
I've been a couple of times.
Not as good as my favorite pizza place, but it's still a pancake place, but the parking's, parking's terrible.
Yeah.
But it'll, it'll die down.
So we worked on tree can be for a bit with you, Ben. So this new regulation is going to make that even more difficult, yes?
I, it, it's really complicated. I'm just going to start there. The goal of the woo-ee code is to reduce wildfire and the destruction of entire communities. On the other side, there are, um, well, even with the, um, Growth Management Act, there are new requirements for climate change. Trees actually benefit and help do a lot of good things for climate. And so that's, that's, that's the challenge. Plus for like the city of Monroe, the, I'm trying to remember, I believe it's the Department of Natural Resources came up with these maps. And for the city of Monroe, they say, well, this area is at high risk and this area is at moderate risk and this area is not at risk. If you look at our map, it kind of makes no sense because the areas that they've identified for the least amount of risk is up Chain Lake Road where you still have quite a few trees because the area is still developing. Downtown, they have identified as high risk. And so there, that's one of the things that, um, other cities like Monroe said, wait a minute. Who made these maps and based on what, what was the qualification? And so that, the map itself or the mapping exercise is one of the items that's being debated, debated right now. So it's, um, again, very good intent, but we have these competing, um, things that we're trying to achieve. And unfortunately that one is pretty restrictive. More to come.
The map is difficult because if we don't adopt their map, that we look at it and we say, well, this doesn't really make sense. Then we have to go through the trouble of creating our own map.
And hiring consultants and specialists.
It's difficult.
Great question. Right. Code enforcement, um, not a lot of updates there. Five open cases and nine resolved in January. Um, in business licenses, it was kind of a busy month. There were 71 new business license applications and 157 renewals. These are the new business license applications. A lot of them were existing businesses. So just something I noticed this month.
Why do they say new business of their existing businesses and not renewals?
Because they're new business licenses. Or existing businesses.
So does that, does that mean that they were operating without a license?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, on a regular basis, the Department of Revenue, I believe, lets us know. And then we begin co-enforcement or they come in on their own.
A lot of times they come in on their own.
Kate, did you have any updates for the comprehensive plan? No, I'll be updating this paragraph as we start getting into the chapters. This is, um, basically summarizing again what we accomplished last year. And the update to the comprehensive plan amendment is the shoreline master plan ordinance is scheduled to go to city council for first reading on February 13th and adoption on February 27th. So that would be tomorrow. Moving on to annexations, um, there's an update. You'll notice that the R41 annexation has now officially been moved over to the Monroe 30 annexation. Uh, this application is for approximately 30 acres east of the Monroe Woodlands annexation area and west of Robin Hood Lane. Um, the applicant has submitted the signed 10% annexation petition. Yeah. And on this one, it's going to city council tomorrow night for the initial meeting with the applicant. So, uh, more to come after tonight's meeting.
Thanks, Hannah. Okay. Get to discussion by commissioners and staff. I'll start with folks on Zoom. Melanie?
Thank you, staff, for the presentations. Um, it was a quick introduction and I'm looking forward to taking a deeper dive on this in the weeks to come. Um, and other than that, nothing for me, other than it's really windy and rainy outside right now. So be safe out there.
Is that thunder? That's probably, yeah, that sounds like you're moving a trash can.
It is. It's the, it's a trash can moving, I think, outside my house. I'm sorry.
No, I hear it outside, unless it's.
That's thunder.
I hear thunder.
It was thunder, I think, because my, my partner is not home to move the trash can. So.
Thanks, Melanie. Liz?
Um, just reiterating what Melanie said, thanks for staff for the great presentations and yeah, we got a lot of reading to do and I agree, IHOP is a nice, uh, if you haven't had their cinnamon roll pancakes.
Yeah.
Anyways, um, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Bob?
Thanks to staff, great presentations. Good to see you, Ben. Uh, good work, uh, Hannah, good work, Kate. And thanks to the public for participating in tonight's meeting. Don't be strangers.
Thanks, Bob. Lance, are you there?
I am here. I don't have anything else to add and for some reason my computer camera has decided not to work this evening after working most of the day earlier.
Okay. Appreciate you being here, Lance.
Um, did anyone go to the chocolate?
I didn't.
Bye.
Carla did.
That was the beat?
Yeah, cool.
I think so. Um, I was wondering, the, for those permit, um, meetings, do you have to schedule enough limit? Or can you just walk in?
Pre-application meetings? Um, they are scheduled. They're on Tuesday afternoons. We schedule them two weeks out. So you can just email me and I can send you the form that you fill out to request one.
All right. Um, so I say thank you, staff, and that's all I have.
I don't have anything. Another short meeting, uh, but there's like, I like the substance of the stuff we covered tonight. So this is a nice, easy chunk to be able to absorb and still have brain power to think about it. So, thanks. Yeah.
Appreciate it. Um, the only thing I had is when we get to allowed uses in the downtown promenade, I'd like us to consider no private, uh, type. I'd like us to consider no private type entities like private museums. The promenade was intended for constant public use and walking and vibrant downtown, which is precluded if it's private, you know, every third Saturday or whatever, so. That's just.
Thanks. Ben? I don't have anything to do here. Okay. Kate?
I do not have anything that we already covered tonight. Thank you.
Ellen?
All I have is because Kate seemed excited about them at our last meeting, I ordered some flags for us. Like what council has, but they're green flags because I feel like it's a happy color. Got some green flags coming.
Like for?
Raise your hand. To raise your hand, right.
Oh. Nothing to do with these.
It'll be a little more formal instead of our microphones.
Until we are back where we have formal microphones where you get to hit the button and then red comes up.
Yeah, we'll raise your flag. Should be easier for you to manage a meeting, although we're right here.
You guys are great. I mean, you're doing super well on points and. But he's, right?
I think so.
Could his public show up and?
Do we have any extra meetings this month?
No. Yeah, right, right now, I do not, knock on plastic. I'm hoping that we are not gonna have any additional meetings. If we get into crunch time, it's gonna be more like July, August and September. Right now, the public hearing is scheduled at your first meeting in October. So that's, we're really trying to give you each chapter first. And so by the time we give you the complete document in August, we're hoping that it'll be pretty, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so commissioners, your homework in the next two weeks, if you wouldn't mind. If you don't have any edits or comments about what was presented this evening, just let Kate know you don't have any comments. But I know you at least got a couple of things you'd like to see edited, so please respond just to Kate.
Yep.
Or Kate and Hannah, but not to all of the commission, please. Okay, thank you.
Great.
Anyone like to move to German or you want to sit here for a while?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One second.
Thanks, Kelsey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thanks for being so efficient this evening, folks.